Live.
Come down.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Here.
Councilmember Golumback.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Here.
Council President Pritchard.
At the.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Present.
President Proton Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo.
Present.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Quorum is present.
Stand for the pledge. Thank you.
Our chaplain, the Reverend Dr. Al Warner. You're on mute, Doctor.
Thank you, Council President. Today is special for me. Deb and I were able to be at Deuville College for Nick Walenda's walk a couple of weeks ago now, along with Majority Leader Rivera. And a couple of verses come to mind as I sort of thought about those that are joining us today. The first is one I think is so precious for Niagara Falls, Psalm forty-two. "Deep calls to deep in the roar of your waterfalls, all your waves and breakers have swept over me. By day, the Lord directs his love; at night, his song is with me, a prayer to the God of my life." Just thought that was powerful as I think about Nick and what opened up to him in Niagara Falls in his walk there nine years ago now. And then for Deuville College, the compassion that comes from your founder and is reflected by Jesus in Matthew fourteen. When Jesus heard what had happened, he withdrew by boat privately to a solitary place. Hearing of this, the crowds followed him on foot from the towns. When Jesus landed and saw a large crowd, he had compassion and healed their sick. Compassion on them and healed their sick. The new health professions hub at Deuville is meant to be, it says, "an education-training community health center embedded in Buffalo's website, where students, medical professionals, and community members can come together." And as I read about St. Marguerite Deuville, I saw the compassion that was represented in her life and all that she has still imprinted here in our precious city. And so I'm thankful for our guests that have joined us. And let's bow together now in prayer. Father, thank you for the glory of the waterfalls that are in the backyard of Buffalo, New York. Lord, they represent such power and majesty. And when the pandemic is done, tourists by the millions. Thank you, Father, that they're a natural wonder of the world and we revel and are in awe at the size and spectacle of our God. Thanks that it was a place that framed Nick from the age of six on and continues to. Thank you for our friends from Deuville and for the impact and imprint that this school has had for so long. And Father, now in compassion, as they reach out to the West Side and train people to help extend and expand healthcare opportunities, we pray your blessing. Father, thank you that you have compassion over more than just those who are ill and sick, but the citizens of Buffalo that each of these council members represent. Lord, I pray now that they, as leaders, will have the hands and arms, the feet of Christ. And in compassion, reach out to those in need in each of their districts. Bless now our city, we ask, and thank you for your powerful presence today in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Warner. Councilmembers' memorials. I know that, and I'm looking up his name, we mourn the passing of one of our commissioners' sons, Otis Barker. His son's name was Jared, who passed suddenly on yesterday from natural causes. I was able to be with him to help him get through that moment. Otis is very active with our youth, has been active with our youth even before being the commissioner. So it is with a very sad heart that we remember Jared at this time. Any others? Seeing no others, we always remember men and women who have given their life for the freedom of not only our country, but of other countries since our last meeting. We pause for a moment of silence. Thank you. Special presentation from our Majority Leader Rivera.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Today, we're joined by the President of Deuville College, Lori Clemmel, Vice President of Operation, Nate Martin, and Nick Walenda, aerialist, air devil, high-wire artist, and author. In June, second week of June, we celebrated the opening of their Professionals Health Building on the city's West Side. Students and health professionals from eight disciplines will come together to provide specialized medical services to individuals and families living in surrounding neighborhoods underserved by our healthcare industry. That day, we had the good fortune of having to open the building Nick Walenda. He had the key in his possession, so we had to wait for him to cross the high wires to get to the other side to open the building so we can actually go in the building. He walked three hundred and thirty feet, five stories above pavement, from the Montanti Building all the way up to the new building that they built. He brought a lot of excitement and energy to the city's West Side and to the region. But most importantly, I think we celebrate the fact that the healthcare needs of many will be met as a result of what Deuville College is doing, along with Catholic Health. And I want to give a special thanks to the leadership of the fifteenth president of Deuville College, Lori Clemmel. And let me just say that I want to thank Reverend Al Warner, because he was behind the scenes organizing this, having Nick Walenda here today. And we're so honored to have him. His faith, I believe, is what gives him the courage to stand up on those high wires. And I was nervous just watching him. I couldn't imagine with those bluebirds flying overhead, making all that noise, how he's able to concentrate and cross all the way to the other side without... Well, he did have, I believe, a harness, but he never had to use it. But he made it all the way to the other side. So it's a great feat. It's great for the city of Buffalo, as it was for Niagara Falls years back. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to the President of the college, Lori Clemmel, and then she can introduce Nick Walenda. Thank you so much.
And thank you, Councilman Rivera, and thank you all. It's such a privilege and honor to be with all of you today. And I think you did a wonderful job of describing what that day was for all of us. It was a dream come true for the college to open up our health professions hub. It is our mission and action. Our mission is to serve. And this really represents our ability to provide healthcare services, education, and training for the residents of the city of Buffalo and even beyond. And we could think of no better way to celebrate than to have Nick Walenda with us, who represented stepping out of our boundaries, moving into something different, but doing it with faith, which is, you know, central to our mission here at Deuville as well, too. And to just be strong, courageous, and bold about what the next steps are. Now, our institution for more than a hundred years has done this. We've responded to the needs of employers, but also, and most importantly, to the needs of the residents of the West Side of Buffalo. That's what this institution represents for us today. But I will say, none of this could have happened without the support that we received from our Councilman Rivera and the city of Buffalo. No other city would have come behind us in the way that the city of Buffalo has to be able to provide this great asset for the community. We're just at the beginning. We have plans for more growth and expansion on the West Side here. So my message is, we are humbled by this honor to be here with all of you today. And we are responsible and will continue to be responsible for helping our community that surrounds the college, and it is a privilege for us to do that. I will now turn it over to Nick Walenda, who can tell us a little bit about why he was here and his interest in what that day meant to him. So Nick, thank you for joining us and the council as well.
Thank you, Lori, and thank you, council. It's an honor to be here, of course, from a vast difference. I'm getting ready to face a tropical storm outside. I'm down in Florida. And so we have some interesting weather, so I'm glad that I'm actually able to see me and I'm able to be on this Zoom. But it was just an honor to be a part of that incredible event that was done at Deuville a couple of weeks ago. You know, my passion is people, and I just love people. And anything that I can be a part of that is giving back to a community. And I have to say, Buffalo, Niagara Falls, has been a huge part of my life. From, as Dr. Warner said, from childhood, six years old. First time, my parents were actually performing in Buffalo on a shine circus, and we went down to visit Niagara Falls. And when I looked across those falls at six years old, I remember thinking, wondering why my parents hadn't walked a wire across yet. And that's sort of when that dream of walking across Niagara Falls came to me. Of course, family history dates back a couple hundred years, so the reality is, this is my life. In fact, my great-grandfather Carl Walenda said it best when he said, "Life is on the wire, and everything else is just waiting." So I believe that pertains to everybody in this world. We're all on a line. We're all trying to get safely to the other side. And that's where, as Councilman Rivera mentioned, my faith plays a huge key role in everything in life. It's not just my faith to get up on that wire, but it's my faith to get out of bed every morning, too. And my goal in life is just to share the love of Christ to everybody that I come in contact with. And God has blessed me with an amazing platform, a platform that is often natural wonders around the world, from Niagara Falls to the Grand Canyon, to most recently, an active volcano. And of course, more recent than that, Deuville College. So I'm excited to be here. I'm also excited to say that my daughter, it looks like my daughter is going to be attending Deuville for college. She'll actually be coming there, well, soon, for next semester. And so I'm excited about that. So you'll see me roaming the streets of Buffalo as I visit my daughter, I'm sure, quite a bit over the next four years. But again, just an honor to be here. I don't want to speak for too long, but thank you, guys, for this opportunity.
Thank you. Majority Leader.
Council President, I'm not going to read the whole proclamation. I'm just going to read the last whereof and therefore. Whereas Nick Walenda was honored with the first-ever St. Marguerite Deuville College Faith in Action Award in recognition of his faith in God that fuels his work and allows him to break boundaries, conquer fear, and share his gift with the world. Now, therefore, the city of Buffalo Common Council does hereby proclaim June seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one, as Health Professional Hub and Nick Walenda Day in the city of Buffalo, New York. To be commended, this observation to all of the citizens. Thank you once again to Deuville College, Nick Walenda, Nate Martin, the Board of Trustees, the Board of Directors, for the great work you're doing, meeting the healthcare needs of our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Majority Leader, and you've mentioned his faith and getting on that wire. I have faith, and I can't even go up on the first floor and look out the window, the second floor of my house and look out the window. So maybe he has much more tremendous faith. Thank you all for being with us. It is greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
All righty. Councilmembers, you have the late files in front of you. Are there any objections to any of the late files? Seeing though, we will hear the entire agenda, not taking away your right to pause the meeting. On the motion by Mr. Rivera, second by Mr. Scanlon, the minutes of stated meeting held on June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-one are approved. Majority Leader, are we going from the top?
We can go from the top.
All right. We're here from the top.
Item number one, Certificate of Appointment, Commissioner of Management Information Services, Daryl Springer.
Motion to approve items one, two, three. Let's see, there's a, number three was not marked. Is that an approved council member?
That is, and also, can I speak on item number one, please?
Okay, so we're going to approve items one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and eight.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt and Councilmember Noakowski. You have the floor.
Thank you very much. This is the appointment of Daryl Springer to be the Commissioner of MIS. And I know that many appointments come to this body, but this one is a really good one and one that will do this city great pride. Daryl began his city hall career twenty-one years ago as a city programmer, and him and his partner are proud residents of the Niagara District. And this is something really cool, because he's really a Buffalo boy through and through. He grew up in Buffalo Public Schools, is a Hutch Tech grad, and a Buffalo Bengo, and graduated from Buffalo State in Management Information Systems. And I'm very proud of this appointment, and I'd like to make the motion to approve.
All right. It's been approved and seconded, but we will receive your comments for the record.
Thank you.
All righty. Next slide.
Did you get a roll call?
Oh, yes.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yeah.
Council President Pritchard.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Proton Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number nine, Annual Audit Plan Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-Two.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item ten, Change Order, Dorothy J. Collier, C.C. Ruth, Progressive.
Motion to approve items ten through... Through twenty-four.
Through twenty-two? I think twenty-three is...
Twenty-two, correct.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pritchard.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Proton Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item twenty-three, Approval to Purchase New Police Vehicles.
Motion to send finance.
Second by Councilmember Golumback.
Item twenty-four, Permission to Accept Twenty-Twenty State Homeland Security Funding.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pritchard.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Proton Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item twenty-five, National Fuel Gas Distribution Versus City of Buffalo.
Motion to send to legislation, items twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven.
Second by Councilmember Farrelotto.
Item twenty-eight, Booster License, Ten Thirty-Two, West Ave.
Motion to approve items twenty-eight through thirty-two. Can you scroll up? Through thirty-four.
Second by Councilmember Farrelotto.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pritchard.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Proton Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item thirty-five, Liquor Licenses.
Motion to receive and file items thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Item forty, Notice of Appointment, Council Intern.
Motion to adopt.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item forty-one, Speed Hops, Judges Row.
Motion to send to CD.
Second by President Proton Scanlon.
Item forty-two, Council Meeting Transcripts.
A motion to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item forty-three, White Supremacy in Police Departments.
Motion to send to police oversight.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item forty-four, Request Public Input Regarding Buffalo Public Schools' Use of American Rescue Plan Funds.
Motion to send to the Education Committee.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item forty-five, Letter to Council President Regarding ARP.
Motion to send to finance.
My Councilmember Wyatt.
Item forty-six, Letter to Parking Commissioner Helper.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item forty-seven, Special Use Permit, Seven One Six, On One.
A motion to send to legislation to City Planning Board, items forty-seven through fifty.
Second by Councilmember Farrelotto.
Submissions List, Civil Service, item number one, Appoint Sabre Streets Coordinator.
Motion is to receive and file items one, two, three, four, and including five.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Finance, item six, Twenty-Twenty-One Annual Action Plan.
Motion to approve items number six and seven.
Second by Councilmember Golumback.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pritchard.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Proton Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item eight, Buffalo Sewer Authority Budget.
Motion to receive and file numbers eight and nine.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Community Development, item number ten, Report of Sale, Two Forty-Four, Maple.
A motion is to recommit.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item eleven, Acknowledgement from Office of Canadian Prime Minister.
Motion is to receive and file.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt. And on that, we did get a response, but still no change. I think it's rather unfortunate that the only change that was given was for Canadian citizens to be able to go back and forth on the border as long as they are vaccinated, as if American citizens should receive the Canadian citizens, which we are a loving people, especially the city of good neighbors. But it should be both ways. And so I do want to thank our delegation in the federal government, who has really been trying hard to make that happen. But I also want to thank my colleagues for their support in even contacting Canada, the Prime Minister there, to say, what about us? There are families that have been split apart. There are people there that own property and paying taxes there that need to and want to go to their houses. And so it is an important venture. So I just wanted to make sure that the public knew that the council has been paying attention and has reached out to ask that the border be open to American citizens at some level. Thank you, sir. Next slide.
Legislation, item number twelve, New Tire Handler, Fifty-Nine Stanislas.
Items twelve and thirteen are in the Fillmore District, and we're sent without recommendation.
Mr. Chair, you can make a motion to approve both of them with conditions that I have sent to the clerk.
Okay, Councilmember Scanlon, is item fourteen approve?
We can approve item fourteen with the condition of a one-year sunset.
Okay, so motion to approve items twelve, thirteen, fourteen with conditions. Fifteen for approval. Sixteen and seventeen are in Fillmore and South. Sixteen.
Both of those in the Fillmore District are approved with...
Okay, sixteen approved with conditions. Seventeen in South.
We can approve.
Is also unapproved, and eighteen is going to be recommitted, recommitted to approve through seventeen.
Second by Councilmember Golumback.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pritchard.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Proton Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item eighteen, Special Use Permit, One Twenty-Five Crescent.
A motion to recommit.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item fifty-one, Habitat for Humanity Fee Waiver.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pritchard.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Proton Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item fifty-two, Western New York Land Conservancy Grants for Funding from Empire State Development in New York State.
I apologize. This was a late file. Deferred to Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Majority Leader. This, I believe, is adopted to support a grant application from the land conservancy.
Motion to adopt.
Second by Councilmember Noah Combs.
Item fifty-three, Local Law, Section Thirteen Dash Twenty-One, Right to Know.
Motion sent to legislation.
Motion is in the legislation. We will discuss it in legislation, but a lot has been adjusted with great community input. And probably one of the main things deals with the children or minors in ensuring that, you know, minors are protected, but also that they get the same information. So I do want to thank our community partners who have worked along with our great corporation, Council Karen Gordon, to make this happen. So people may want to read now the adjusted or amended right to know. Thank you, sir. Next slide.
Item fifty-four, Buffalo United Front's Family Fishing Day Fee Waiver.
Motion to approve items fifty-four, fifty-five, and fifty-six.
Second by Councilmember Farrelotto.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pritchard.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Proton Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item fifty-seven, Ordinance Amendment, Chapter Four Seventy-Nine, Adopt a Street Park Program.
Motion to send legislation, item fifty-seven and fifty-eight and fifty-nine.
Second by President Proton Scanlon.
Item sixty, Budget and Personnel Amendment, Common Council.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Wingo.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelotto.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pritchard.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Proton Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item sixty-one, American Rescue Plan Community Input.
This is a late file.
All right, this is a late file. Councilmember Wyatt.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank my colleagues who have supported this. I think it's critically important to have public input with this one-time opportunity for residents who have been impacted by COVID- nineteen. I know we've spent some, had some expenditures already used, which the council is okay, because it's something that's helping our young people, absolutely. But I think for us to have a comprehensive plan to really impact the people who have been impacted by COVID- nineteen, it's got to be a collective effort. So we want to support the administration, as well as having the community speak on this particular issue. It just can't be a decision made by one. It has to be a collective decision to really make the long-lasting impact. So thank you to my colleagues who have supported this, and I hope that we can get the administration to work... And I hope that we can get the administration to work collaboratively to, again, make this one-time opportunity um, the greatest impact that we can. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Yeah, I, I totally agree, and I'll come right to you, councilman Wingo, I think that what is so important um, and you, we have in this resolution, and thank you for allowing me to sign on with you um, a public meeting uh, so that we are able to hear uh, from the public, and then also I think it's important to hear from the individual uh, council members the same way that we do any budget. You know, this is close to what we would spend uh, in a year uh, coming uh, from the federal government. And so I know that in talking to several of the council members, there were different priorities that uh, several council members even have, and I think it's important to have these discussions before we are presented uh, with a plan, and then it looks as if we're pushing back on a plan that we may not have um, insisted on having the input um, from our, from my colleagues uh, and from the public. Uh, this is the biggest amount, at least in my time uh, besides being uh, the billion dollars when I was on the school board. Um, and, and I still disagree with the way that was handled. Um, a billion dollars came to the school board and a few people in the room made a decision of who was going to get the contract, and I remember finding out, sitting in a meeting with the superintendent. This is who we decided, when I asked the question, well, what about, what about the public, what about the rest of the school board members, I was told, and I quote uh, that's what they elect me to do, and that's how it went down. Um, I don't want to lead this council at this point um, with this amount of money coming and not leading the right direction uh, that would open up, up to hear from the public, so we will announce um, as soon as we get a date of, uh, and talk to my colleagues about their availability. Um, a public meeting that will occur, but the public right now, which we were informed today, can go right to the city's website and they can, uh, I believe there is a tab there um, for them, but we, the common council has a responsibility also uh, to hear from the public, uh, but they can go to the city's website, I'm not really sure, I was so, we were told this morning by the commissioner and caucus um, or this afternoon, that there is a website up right now, so I encourage citizens uh, to participate in that. Uh, but also to participate in every level of government uh, when we talk about the spending of these funds. Uh, so thank you uh, for the resolution, council member Wingo.
Thank you, uh, Mister Chair, the resolution uh, absolutely gives the common council an opportunity to have a hearing. But you, you just stated it, Mister President, that there is already a survey on the city's website. It is the Buffalo Transformational uh, Survey. If you go to the city of Buffalo's website, you will see Buffalo Transformation Fund, or if you don't see it just type it into the search bar on the city's website. Just type in Buffalo Transformation Fund, or type in Buffalo Transformation Survey, and that will come up for you, that has been active since June third. So it's been active well over a month now, so it's been active over a month where the community could give their input give their ideas and such, so that the administration can have multiple uh, ways to cons, uh, multiple ideas to consider uh, how to uh, use these funds, so I just want to make sure that that was uh, very, very clear to the public, thank you, Mister Chair, appreciate it.
Not a problem, all right, so we will get out as much information as we can to try to get as much uh, participation. Um, I think what is important though, because some of the suggestions don't fit, I think what, what is so important right now it needs to be very public, what the federal government is saying could be funded. Uh, because we're getting people who are, who don't know, and quite frankly, probably many of us don't know exactly what it is, so we've got to be able to uh, whittle this down to an understanding level uh, that we all can understand, and so that, that is what I would want to happen in these next couple of days, um, so that when we do invite people to speak on this they know what the money can be used for and what the money cannot be used for. Uh, because I think that that's a part of the big gap, um, because the city's website allows you to, um, I, I assume you know, give your opinions, uh, but people need to know what is it we can do and what is it that we can't. All right, council member Bowman.
Thank you, Council President, I just wanted to add my name to this resolution, I think uh, a public meeting, hearing from the residents is a great idea, I've been seeing residents around the district, and they're all excited about the opportunity that we have here, and I'm also excited, and I have a lot of ideas, so I think uh, the resolution's a great idea to have a public meeting and hear input, I don't think that's a, ever a bad idea, so thanks to the sponsor.
All right, council member Noakowski.
Thank you, Mister President, you can also add me too, I do believe a, a community meeting is beneficial, I represent a district that uh, has a lot of, many different languages, I mean, I know the survey is only in English, so I know uh, being inclusive to those that do not speak English as their first language, uh, would be beneficial, and especially uh, if we can include them in this process, so thank you.
Yeah, I think that's very important, thanks for that, council member Noakowski, and a part of the resolution uh, that we worked on, if you look at the last part, um, it talks about basically not making any other moves until we have met and we have a process uh, in place, um, so that uh, all council members are part of that conversation, um, and are public, so, any other comments? All right. Motion to adopt, second by council member Wyatt.
Item sixty-two, request Public Works Policy for Lot Cleaning.
Motion is sent to C D.
Second by council member Wyatt, who has the floor.
Thank, thank you, Mister Chair, and you know, I'm just asking Public Works, and I want to have further conversation with them on how they clean the lots. I've heard a lot of complaints about how the lots are not maintained in a um, timely fashion, um, I know I have a couple of lots in my district where I get the ire from some of the residents, in that the lot is cleaned after it's two feet high and there's a lot of paper and glass, and it's just blight on top of blight, so I want to ask the commissioner on how do we address this issue, because for us to go and clean a lot and has three feet, four feet of grass with paper and that, and it's cleaned, and it's not really cleaned, it's just blight on top of blight, we have to develop a process. Um, one of my neighborhoods in, on Weston Avenue in particular, where there's a service lot, every year we know we have to clean that lot. And the residents every year send a angry letter to me because they're frustrated that someone would clean a lot with three feet high grass and cut it and leave the dirt, the, the paper and the glass and the litter, just making as bad as the three feet of grass. So we really, really need to have a process in place, if we need to send out an R F P or whatever, because we'd have many lots in the city and none of them should be addressed in that way, because you might as well leave the, the blight. If you're going to leave it, if you're going to leave paper and cut it with paper and grass and all those things in, within the um, the lot, you might as well just leave it, and that's not a, that's not respectful to the residents who live in those areas who work very hard to try to maintain their communities and a plea of eyesore is eyesore, and we should be doing a better job in that, thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, you know, my, my problem, and I'll come right to you, council member Glomback, it's the littering that we got to clean up in the first place from people throwing crap out, so I encourage our citizens, if you see it reported and you, you are eligible, uh, what is it, about fifteen hundred dollars, uh, because the city is cleaning up stuff that other people are throwing out there, and, and that's a shame of what we see in our communities, it wouldn't be tolerated anyplace else. Councilman Glomback.
Uh, thank you, Mister President, I want to commend uh, my colleague for this, and I agree with him wholeheartedly. Um, I'm fortunate in many regards, we just approved, I think it was item number four, um, to allow um, a property that was a vacant lot owned by the city of Buffalo to be purchased by a next-door neighbor. I'm fortunate that I don't have a great number of vacant lots, I don't have the same problems that some parts of the city of Buffalo do, that being said, I do have a handful that are very frustrating. And it seems like we get cut last because they're out in the neighborhoods, and I understand where there's, you know, a hundred lots in a short area, they come into Riverside or Black Rock, and there's a half a dozen. Um, interestingly enough, uh, and when I put this together, I will share it with uh, with my colleagues. Um, working with some of my block clubs and my community groups and with Commissioner Finn we're putting together a demonstration project of using clover, planting clover on one of my lots in Riverside, and it's going to be basically driven by the community, it's going to be volunteers uh, with myself and a group of residents of Black Rock and Riverside. And it's the equivalent of about two or three uh, uh, city lots. And we're hoping that with the planting of clover, that it doesn't grow higher than about three inches, it doesn't need to be uh, cut as much, um, they are doing this in other cities, and this was something that uh, uh, people like Anne McCulley and Alyssa Hamilton brought to me and said, hey, this would be a great idea to do in North. And, you know, this was the, you know, cooperation between residents and, you know, the council office, city hall and making this a possibility this year, so I'm hoping that this would be something that would work, and so instead of worrying about cutting the grass all the time our main concern is going to be the litter, and as the council president said, you know, with the uh, rewards and other things out there, hopefully we can cut into that, you know, as uh, as soon as possible, because I, I, I'm sure all of our districts are doing the same thing. We have residents that are volunteering their time, as a matter of fact, this Saturday, we're going to have a Black Rock Riverside cleanup uh, um, in the neighborhood, so, but I would, I commend you, and I will get this in front of us as soon as we have it written down.
Thank you, we all, we all sit here fi, trying to figure out how to get clover now, um, right away, uh, so we'll, we'll look forward to that, because that is it very, very important, and you just mentioned something, in case any of our block clubs uh, are listening, you know, we, the elicit office stands by, uh, even through one of our community groups, financially, if you would help us uh, in those neighborhoods, we can help you um, to help yourself. Anything else on that item? Anything else before the council, that's the last item on the agenda?
Council President.
Uh, yes, sir.
Yeah, if we could revisit item, I believe it's twenty-three, the purchase of the, police vehicles.
All right, motion to re, uh, visit item twenty-three, second by council member Wyatt, this before us.
Thank you, Council President, I was just wondering that if um, my colleagues would have a problem approving this today. Um, this money's been previously set aside, we knew it was coming for these vehicles, I know we've all heard over the course of the past couple of years that the police department is really lacking um, adequate vehicles, so I hate to hold it up even the two weeks if we could approve it today. Just wondering if I could uh, see what my, the rest of my colleagues were thinking, if they'd be willing to approve it today.
I'm not sure who wanted it to go, so I'll ask. There's an amount on here of approximately one million five hundred or twenty-four marked vehicles in a cargo. Was there anyone?
Yeah, and tha, and that number was previously set aside in our budget, we approved it in our budget, so um, it's not something that's new to us, so if we could move on that, I'd love to, because again even the two-week holdup, I'd love to get these vehicles in the hands of the officers as soon as possible.
Was there individually we wanted, council member Wyatt?
So, is that being leased or what? I, I'm not sure, I mean, I know it was approved, but I, I don't, we don't know the details behind the approval, because there was something stated that they wanted to lease vehicles as opposed to buying vehicles. So I really will underhear some of the details behind what they're doing and how they're going about doing it. I absolutely agree, we want to get these vehicles in the hands of our officers uh, because I know that there, the, the inventory is, you know, challenged right now, but I really want to hear more details behind that. And if someone would have came to us and told, uh, talked to us beforehand, I certainly would have been, you know, amenable with approving it right away.
But then, um, council member, the, the item uh, speaks to the purchase of the vehicles. So it's not, this isn't the least one on this one.
Right, but in the past, we've talked about leasing vehicles, so I wanted to have some conversation about that, I didn't think it was that urgent. But, you know, if someone could have got to us earlier, I would have been okay with approving it right off the bat.
So can I just make a recommendation, only reason, I, I, the, I know uh, a car responded the other day in my neighborhood in a rental, uh, so I, I'm okay, if you're okay, if we could file an item and ask for an update on the leasing program, would you be okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so what we'll do, uh, council member Wyatt, we'll file a separate item for, to get an update for the overall program, you know, are we leasing, are they still talking about leasing? Um, if in your request, council member, you can ask about uh, the electric vehicles, you know, and moving I think we need a full, comprehensive uh, report, if that's cool with you. All right, so Majority Leader.
If there's no objection, we'll um, rescind the previous motion uh, to send to committee, and motion is now to approve.
Second by council member Wyatt.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farallato.
Yes.
Councilmember Glomback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Pridgen.
Yes.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Yes.
President Pro temp Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
All right, announcements.
Announcement of committee meetings, the following meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on www.facebook.com forward slash B F L O C C. Committee on Civil Service, Tuesday, July thirteenth at nine forty-five A M. Committee on Finance following Civil Service at ten A M. Committee on Legislation, Tuesday, July thirteenth at one o'clock P M. Committee on Community Development, Tuesday, July thirteenth at two o'clock P M. Special Committees, Committee on Police Oversight, Wednesday, July fourteenth at eleven o'clock A M.
All right, and just a reminder that our July twentieth meeting uh, will be our first time uh, live here in the chambers. Um, the chambers has been prepared, at least for the council members, uh, with social distancing. Um, if the public comes, um, if there is some in the public, they are uh, welcome, but we will still continue to observe uh, social distancing, uh, and we'll have more on the policy of the mask uh, as we get closer to that date. But it's July twentieth, our regular meeting, and then our last committee meeting, as we work out any kinks um, will be held virtually, and our expectation is, after the August break um, we will be back into the chambers uh, for our meetings. Council members, any announcements for your districts? Council member Wyatt?
Thank you, Mister President, um, just want to invite the residents of the university district um, to our first in-person meeting. Um, it will be taking place this Saturday at Dryer Place from nine A M to twelve noon. Um, there's a lot on the agenda, so we want to make sure that you register, so please call my office at seven one six eight five one five one six five to register. Um, we will still be exercising social distancing, um, if you have been vaccinated, we ask that you are, you come, if you have not you'll have to wear a mask, but we still will be exercising social distancing. Um, there'll be a continental breakfast, and not the usual hot breakfast, to again, continue to exercise the uh, social distancing and other um, matters and how we conduct ourselves during this pandemic, so we're looking forward to a great meeting. And again, thank you to the public, because you requested this meeting. Um, I wanted to wait, but you asked for it, and we're going to do it, because I think it's really important for us to reengage and get back on track to um, addressing the concerns of the community, so thank you, Mister President.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, seeing none, councilman.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second by council member Bowman.